Nine. We don't want anybody calling anything.
Go ahead.
Uh-uh. Six fifty-nine. Don't do it.
Why you on the top?
Do you ever see how fa- fast a minute go by?
Meeting called to order today is Tuesday, October third. It is now seven P.M. Town Council meeting in the Town Council Chambers, eleven seventy Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. Before we rise for prayer, can we also stand for a moment of silence for the tragedy in North Vegas and the victims and families that were affected? Thank you, John. Will you lead us in prayer?
Yes. Our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we ask that you guide this council in our elected responsibilities. Give us each the wisdom to govern with fortitude, vision, integrity, and compassion. Lord, we ask that you bless this great town of West Warwick and all the good people in it. Amen.
Angel, please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilman Padula?
Yeah.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
Here's a quorum. Minutes of the previous meeting resolved that the minutes of the September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen Town Council meeting are hereby accepted.
Move the resolution.
Second resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Consent agenda license application resolved that the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Those licenses are just approved with Saint Anthony's Church, uh, West Warwick Civic Center, uh, Sacred Heart Church, Saint Anthony's Church, uh, West Warwick Teachers Association, bingo license for West Warwick Elks, craft license for community marketing, business license for Socisco, uh, Almonte Law Associates, Paragon, uh, Small Business Solutions, Paradigm Tattoo Company, H.D. Construction, J.F.C. Lawn Care, Forever Pores, uh, Busket Irrigation, Furry and Sons Landscape and Portuguese Instructional Recreational Club, and all pawn broker licenses have been approved. Uh, Conti and Zenini Secondhand Dealer License and Tobacco License for Walgreens. All been approved.
Cancellation of taxes resolved with the attached cancellations in the amount of four thousand three hundred and six dollars and sixty-eight cents presented to the tax collector for approval of the Town Council in accordance with Article twenty-five, Section five of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the office of the tax collector.
Move the resolution.
Second resolution.
Moving second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-three, second reading, sponsored by Council- Councilman, Council President Goslin and Council Vice President D'Amico, an ordinance amending Section nine-five and ten-seven-three of the West Warwick zoning code of ordn- of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second. Discussion, Al?
This is just a housekeeping matter, uh, bringing the zoning code in line with the state statute.
Yep. Any questions, Ralph? Any public comment? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Confuse us. He's Jason. I'm Jerry. Throw me off.
Sorry.
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-five, as amended, second reading sponsored by Council Vice President D'Amico, an ordinance amending five-three-one wind energy conversion systems, five-one-seven wind energy conversion systems, W.E.C.s, by repealing said section in its entirety and adopting a new Section five-seventeen wind energy systems and five-twenty-one green renewable or alternative energy installations and facilities, green projects of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second. Discussion, Al?
Had pretty thorough discussion last, two weeks ago unless there's further discussion. I don't have much-
Forty-five minutes, Ralph. Any other comment? Public comment? Hearing none. Roll call, Jason?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jay?
No.
John?
Yes.
And I voted no last time, so I'm gonna continue voting no this time.
Wind energy resolution?
There's no ordinance.
No.
No, this is just-
Just discussion.
The, the, the res- this is a resolution. Uh, back, we passed a-
Oh, move the resolution.
Second resolution.
Back, uh, in, couple of months ago, we, you passed a resolution placing a moratorium on wind energy systems until December thirty-first. The present ordinance having been passed, a wind on its system going in, uh, e- energy system ordinance going into effect. This is a resolution that repeals the moratorium if, uh, effective on the date that the ordinance you just passed becomes effective.
Any other comment? Any question for Al? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Town Council meeting format sponsored by Council President Goslin.
Okay, just a quick thing. Um, I've been talking to Mark. I've been looking at other council meetings across the state, um, for a few different various reasons. One of the things I'd like to see moved up is public comment to the beginning of the meeting, uh, along with finance report and along with town manager's report. And the reason being is, um, some of the meetings have been getting lengthy and some people are just here to say one thing and wanna go home or whatever it may be. Also, that gives the opportunity for the residents to come up to the microphone and speak about any matter that's on the agenda. Gives us time to actually think about what they said instead of during that, um, topic matter. So it gives us some more time to digest that information. So we can understand that a little better.
We're about to, you're looking at-
Right in the beginning. So it'll be, um-
On here, if you're looking at our agenda right now.
Our agenda now, meeting called to order.
Yeah.
Prayer, pledge of allegiance, quorum on record, minutes of previous meetings, licenses, because those usually go, uh, fairly easy. And then we go into, uh, public comment, or we can go public comment right at the beginning before minutes of previous meeting. So if you go public comment and if somebody has, 'cause, to be honest with you, if somebody has a discussion about minutes of the previous meeting or whatever, they can bring it up right there at the microphone.
Can we al- can we also, can we have some kind of sign up, like, just to make it a little more organized?
Jay, I've been trying to do that for years and the school department proved us wrong because they do it.
Yeah.
I wanted everybody who comes in this meeting to si- have a sign up sheet.
I think we should do that.
Not a-
And I go, I got voted down. I'm for it.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I brought it up four years ago.
Are you looking for a si- like, a sign in sheet as far as questions or?
No.
My, my name is Dave Goslin and I'm gonna come and talk on the topic you wanna talk about. I mean, you know how to do the top-
No, no. What you do is-
Looking for a sign in sheet.
Sign in sheet, I don't know how you want it, but I just said-
An attendance sheet for the meeting?
Attendance sheet for the meeting, who came here, here, and their name and address.
Well, mine is-
I think they're talking about two different-
They're two different things. Mine is, mine is more, if you're gonna come up and s- speak on a matter before the meeting, you sign up. I mean, nobody's gonna be banned from talking, but at least it keeps it organized. So we know, oh, we're gonna have five people, ten people. We know how long it's gonna last. And we have an allocated amount of time and it's divided between how many people are there. And that's the way they do it.
I believe the committee actually puts the subject.
Um, you can't put the subject for public comment because you wanna know what the public is actually commenting on until they come in.
No, but when they come in, they write, you know, "My name is Dave Goslin. I wanna talk about, uh, the wind energy ordinance, the windmill ordinance."
I, I, I just don't know because-
You're gonna get a chance to talk anyway.
Some people come walking in at seven oh-five or whatever. They might not have had a chance to sign up, or you now have to create a line out there, sign up. I, I don't think it's become to that point where we need a, like, a sign up sheet to tell us what you're gonna ask or what you're gonna talk about.
I mean, it's easy, it's easy to phase it in. You don't have to be so strict about it in the beginning, but if, I'm sure a lot of people here know that they're gonna come up and talk before the meeting starts and what they're gonna talk about.
And, and that's where, so, I, I recommend that they reach out to their councilman or council member and then we can put it on, like, there's a couple of things on the agenda that people reached out for tonight. So one, one of my things personally would be public comment. The town, so I, I think actually right at the beginning, right after pledge of allegiance, quorum, a record, would be the town manager's report. We'll go public comment first, town manager's report, and finance report. Because the other reason why I'm looking at the manager's report and the finance report at the very beginning would be, you, you have a finance director or whoever standing up at the microphone at the very end of the meeting when we just made choices to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars at some meetings, and then he could stand up and say, "Well, we don't have any money at this point and we're already passed all the resolutions." So personally, I think we should hear the finances in the beginning, the town manager's report, so we know what's going on, and then we could do our town business from there. Now, all advertised matters, and this is what I wanna make clear because some people thought I was trying to shut people down. That's not the case whatsoever. So all advertised matters, licenses and ordinances, people can, can come up and speak on, during the meeting.
On topic.
On topic, on that topic only. So then we can maintain the meeting.
But if you do the public comment, public comment first, somebody may be able to just address that before we ever, you know, before I guess-
Yeah, because they're gonna bring it to us before.
And we can digest it. That's what I'm saying. So, so let's just say Bert comes up and he says something, I mean, let's face it, the last few weeks, we've had a lot of discussion here, a lot of hours here. And sometimes when somebody comes up to the mic, you're not really, you, you're not getting a chance to really digest what they said because you're focused on everything else that's going on up here. If, if I could sit here and have Bert come up here and have, and he has an idea on, let's say, cancellation of taxes, or he has a question, you know, when we get to that, we can answer it for him.
Dave, if you remember correctly too, maybe four or five years ago, someone said, "You guys are already voting on these before we could even have public comment." So I, I agree with David. I think that format should be first, public comment, because if they're thinking about an ordinance that we're gonna be voting on-
Yep.
We can write it down when we get to it, then we have further discussion on it. I, 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 I don't see anything wrong with that.
And anybody who's attended the school committee meetings, that's exactly how it's done there also. Um, uh, it's, it's, something members of audience comment or whatever it may be. They don't even speak, they don't even speak on any of the topics. They, they can bring up everything at the beginning, but anything advertised, we're still able to, like licenses. If somebody has a, is against a business going next to their house or something, then they can come up and speak their own licenses too. So it's not like it's, or they can have two opportunities to speak action.
What about for, like, discussion action?
Discussion action will still stay in the bottom.
Okay, but as far as, like, people coming up after every discussion action thing or no? They'll just, if they wanna talk about that, they do it in public comment.
No, they bring it right up at the beginning. They bring it up right in the beginning. Anything on the, on the discussion action. So that way they have the council can do their best. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No, I like-
No, but I'd still like a sign up sheet out there. I'm gonna try it again. That Messier brought it up.
Angelo, you don't need that approval. Mary Ann, if you want, put a sign up sheet out there on a clipboard. If somebody wants to sign up and say they've been here, that's fine. I have no problem with that. That's simple. The only thing is, I can't force them to sign up.
I mean, we don't know, but we, in other words, we don't know who's in this building. We don't know who's going upstairs, who's going, I mean, this crazy world that we're living in today, I mean, at least you know who signed in, who didn't sign in. I think it should be-
Mandatory?
Mandatory that they sign that sheet before they come in this council.
Can, can we do that? Like, legally?
He, he, he can't, but how does the school do it?
The school doesn't do that. What the school does is we're guiding their audience of citizens. If, we're gonna use Bert as an example. If Bert wants to speak about having a NASCAR event, he puts out a good nominee and wants to speak about a NASCAR event, he's just not signing up.
Alright, so there's no sense in having a sign up sheet.
If you wanna sign up sheet- If you do it-
What good is it? 'Cause the ones that don't want you to know they're here is not gonna sign it.
E.C.A.U. will be here in about five minutes, uh, suing us. And if they win, they're gonna get fees. So.
Alright, so do we need to make an adjustment through a motion or do we just make an adjustment?
I set the agenda. I didn't wanna do anything without the full council's approval.
I don't have a problem with that idea.
Thank you. Next.
Um, Town Council, oh, homeless, homeless on Pulaski Street.
Jay?
Um, I'm gonna keep this brief. Um, this is, it's just an update, uh, on the homeless that are located on Pulaski Street. Uh, Transformation Committee has been working diligently for the past, uh, ten months, and there has been progress made every month. And a cleanup was taken, had taken place last week. Um, there's still a little bit more left to clean. Uh, there are a few people left there. And, um, hopefully by the end of this month, I'll be able to provide a final report to the public and the council.
I just wanna add, I don't know if the rest of the council got it, but a month ago, I received an email from one of the homeless that was living there. And if you recall, when they were there, it was a problem because the owner allowed them to be there. I mean, this would never happen again, I hope. But now that we had that problem, Jason and them worked very hard on it. But he sent me an email and if I looked through, I gotta look through four hundred emails, thanking me for giving him the time because now we found an apartment, he's got a job, his health is good. And here's a homeless guy that had, 'cause I do things for people that you never even hear from, that took the time and wrote me a beautiful letter. I, I don't know if anybody else got it.
We did see that.
I didn't get it.
I'll forward it to yous, but thanking for having faith in him, that he would get a job and not throw him in the street. So I just wanted to bring that out.
Councilman, how many people are left? Two. 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 That's fantastic. It's a good thing that happened. I, I just, I don't wanna report it till, till it's final.
No, I understand.
But, um, it's a really good thing that happened. They really just needed some support and, and time.
I gotta find that email.
Thank you.
Confidentiality with building inspector complaints sponsored by Councilman Messier.
Jay?
Uh, this is really just about, uh, the form online. I got a call from a constituent last week, um, that wanted to file a complaint about, uh, one of her neighbors in the property. She didn't wanna have to give her name, which makes sense for a lot of those. You don't wanna have to give your name. Um, give her, not, she don't want her name publicly listed. Um, and on our form, it says you can't be confidential, which is not accurate. You can definitely file a confidential report, correct? You can't, you can't file and not have your name attached to that form? I mean-
What legitimacy does a complaint have if someone's not gonna put their name on it?
Put our name so we know where they are, but not so the neighbors know who complained.
Okay, so let me just clarify. On due, on just due process, due process allows for the person, the adverse party to know who made the complaint. No, I think-
'Cause we've had this discussion-
Hold on one second. We've had this discussion numerous times. Um, I've had it happen to me as a councilman, um, and everybody else. When we get a complaint from a resident and we call the building official and say, "Hey, I'm getting a complaint from," I'll use, I'll use my neighbor for an example. Dog was barking all day. Neighbors called me and said, "Dave, this dog won't stop barking, barking, barking." I called, I knocked on my resident, the neighbor's door and nobody answered. I then called the police department to let them know that, "Hey, did you hear this? This dog's over three hundred feet from my house. Can, you know, the neighbors have called me." Police officer who arrived on scene, uh, got on scene, knocked on the door and said, "Hey, the councilman just called on you. Lost the dog to stop barking."
That happened to me three or four times.
And it, and it happens. And, and that's, and he goes to say he wasn't pleasant to me when he, when he saw me the next time.
He, he didn't vote for you next time?
I'm not even going there, but he, he just, wasn't, no, he, he and I had a discussion and we worked it out. But when a resident calls up and says to a council member, "Hey," and we send it over to the building official's office or anybody's office, they should not be going to that resident's house and saying, "Hey, your neighbor over here called on you and I'm here to," I mean-
You can think about what could happen at that point.
How I stopped that, when I call the building official, I go, "I got a couple of constituents that called me." I don't give the name because they're afraid of retaliation, and, and I do it, but that was also mentioned. And it was a building official too that went there and said, "The councilman in this ward called for you."
Yeah, and that's fine. And Jay, we spoke to the sa- the same young lady. Um, I'm gonna give the address.
Yeah, she called me too.
Um, and, I mean, she explained the form, and I just know in the past we talked about it. I thought you were able to file a complaint without, and, and early on, when I first, first got on the council, I got a, an email from a young lady who filed a complaint and her neighbor came knocking on her door to go, "Why didn't you come to me first?" And, I mean, luckily something didn't happen, but I feel like you could set yourself up for something really bad to happen.
Usually when I talk to one of my constituents about something, I ask, "Did you speak to your neighbor first?" Because if they did, then, that's usually when I say to whoever, "Hey, listen, you did speak to them, but nothing's getting done about it." Now-
No, I don't mind being in-
Sometimes I recommend, you might wanna speak to them first because, you know, you might, you can resolve it without, and some people just don't feel comfortable doing that.
But this situation is different. It's a drug house. They're doing different people. It's a bunch of characters there, and she's, she lives alone with her mother and she's afraid.
And I don't mind being in between if, I mean, if they wanna email me, but on their own, I just know online it says you can't confidential, so I wanted to clarify whether they could or not.
I got some problems with the confidentiality, because, uh, the building official, i- if, if, if there's something that's going on within the premises, but the building official has no way of knowing unless that building official gets a call, then he goes out and he knocks on the door, "Why are you here?" "Well, I can't tell you why I'm here." I mean, it becomes, and he doesn't really have a right.
Well, you're not allowed to make anonymous complaints. I mean, if anybody calls the police, they don't have to give-
You're missing a point. If, if it's a building official or there's a building violation that could eventually end up in Minnesota court.
Gotcha.
That person has the right to know who made the complaint.
But the right to f- is that you-
If that person does not exist, the first thing that person's attorney's gonna do is, "Well, if there's no complaint, how'd you go on?"
So, so-
Unless, unless the building official says, "I was driving by and I saw it myself and I issued a citation without the benefit of the, you know, confidential."
What about in this situation where, where the constituent reached out to me and then I sent the information over, then?
Well, then you'd have to instruct the building official to say that there was a complaint made to the, uh, councilman.
Yeah.
And the councilman followed the complaint to me.
So, and if somebody wants-
But again, when that person says, "Who's the person who made the complaint?" You have to, you have to answer.
So in a situation, if somebody wants to remain confidential, uh, they should reach out to their councilman then instead?
They can, but like I said, if it eventually ends up in front of Minnesota law court or it could be a district court, the name's gonna be known.
Especially in the district court.
In the situation, but I mean, what if I didn't re-
It's different, it's different than a nine-one-one call. I mean, you don't have a nine-one-one call for a dog. I mean, like, sometimes.
True, but there, there are different levels of complaints between, from dog barking to, you know, like you said, it could be a drug house, something like that. I would understand why somebody would-
Drug house is a little different because you got a criminal element there that could bring the police in anyway.
Correct. Yeah.
But at that point in time, they're still gonna know who contacted the police because the charges are brought. I mean, you, you can't keep yourself confidential.
My, my major concern, uh, councilmen, is the area, and you're familiar with the situation I'm talking about, where the violations are internal.
Yeah.
And, you know, and if things hadn't been as bad as they are, the councilman can't just walk up, knock on your door and say, "I understand you got bedbugs."
Yeah.
That's true. On a case-by-case basis, I guess.
Yeah, I just wanted to-
That's, you know, we always catch the bad ones.
Thank you, Ellen. Any other questions on that? Thank you.
Animal shelter donations sponsored by Councilman Messier and Council Vice President D'Amico.
Gentlemen?
This is actually sponsored by-
Alright, so Jasmine, you can come up here. Um, Jasmine's with, uh, the West Warwick Lions Club. She's working closely with the, uh, the animal shelter to help renovate the building, and she wants to discuss, uh, funding for the animal shelter, so.
And Jasmine, I apologize 'cause the last meeting, uh, I know you waited till the very end and you actually couldn't get a word in because everything that happened, so.
Well, I spoke, but just not about the shelter. So thank you for, you know, letting me speak anyway. Uh, so good evening. My name's Jasmine Conkey. I live at seventy-nine Lexington Avenue. I'm currently the president of the West Warwick Lions Club. And just for some reference to everybody in the crowd, um, if you're wondering who the Lions are, simply put, we're a volunteer group of people who help those in our local community. We focus on people with cancer and people who have eyesight issues, but our support does reach farther than la- than those two things. And a hundred percent of the money we actually raise every year goes back into the community. So last year, our last fiscal season, we actually put back close to five thousand dollars into the community. Um, so I just wanna really quickly take a moment to acknowledge some of our members that are here today. So Lions, if you just don't mind standing really quick, there's a few of us here.
Roar with that?
Yeah, roar. And I'd also like to just especially welcome our newest member, Baby Macklin. So, thanks. So our latest, uh, community centennial project has been to focus on helping the West Warwick Animal Shelter. And so have anyone here recently been to the shelter? John? Great. So as you know, it's in a horrible, deplorable state. And our goal in the next year is to renovate the shelter enough just to get by as being livable and functional for the animals. And, you know, years down the road, we hope to actually build a brand-new regional shelter. So pie in the sky, but we'll one day get there. And because of major infrastructure issues, our renovated options are limited. Right now, the shelter needs electrical upgrades so we can help create an actual triage location for the animals to come into when they're sick. It needs proper A.C. and proper heating. It also needs a plumbing upgrade so we can donate a washer and drying machine so the shelter can do laundry. Right now, volunteers come every other week to actually take the laundry to a coin-op facility to be able to wash the dog blankets and the beds and everything they use for the animals. And then it brings me to the fence. There's a fence at the animal shelter right now that's in such bad shape, the animals are continually being injured. And most recently, an, a dog got stuck on the shelter, on the fence, and her, the end of her tail was ripped off. And who actually paid for the vet bill? Actually, the five oh-one C-three, that Lori at the animal shelter, she had to set up to offset costs for the shelter because right now the budget doesn't even cover the basic needs of the shelter. And Lori, she spends most of her time probably equal to the amount that she spends working fundraising on that five oh-one C-three just to be able to afford basic needs that the town doesn't cover. And if she left, God forbid she ever left the shelter, the, the shelter would actually crumble in, in the state that it's in. And I don't claim to know a hundred percent about finance, but I was taking a look at the budget and I noticed a line item, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but I noticed that the copy machine budget for the police, uh, the police this year was eight thousand two hundred and eight dollars, and the line item for supplies for the shelter was eight thousand dollars. So from what I can see, we're actually spending more money on copy machines than we do paying for the dog tails that have been injured and animal food. So to date in twenty-seventeen, the only project we've been able to complete is the installation of a new countertop, and we purchased a new sink center for the shelter. And this actually now allows Lori at the shelter to wash the bowls, the dog food, the cat litter trays, the animals in one spot. And I was there when it was installed and the old countertop that came out actually crumbled into the hands of the installer, and he made a comment that he couldn't believe it was actually still standing, because if you would've seen it, there were two-by-fours and all kinds of ricking just to keep it up. So this leads me to my request. And over the winter, we met with some of the town officials and explained the situation. We were told that the repairs needed, the electrical, the plumbing, and the fence were approved and budgeted. True or not, I'm actually sh- I'm not sure, right? I'm not sure this is just what I was told. Um, and Lori at the shelter has done her due diligence in getting quotes for the fence year after year, um, letting people know about what's actually going on, but nothing's actually happened. So tonight, we're here to ensure that the desperate upgrades are seen through to completion. And I just wanna make a quick note, separate from the club, I voted, as I say every time I come up here, I, I voted for the budget for many different reasons, and, and one for this year specifically, which made me feel a little bit better, was because what I thought would happen was the animal shelter would get the upgrades that I was told were going to happen, and now I'm hearing otherwise. So I, I just wanna make sure that the animal shelter gets what it needs, not what it deserves, but just what it needs to meet what's going on today. So we're all here tonight just to understand, you know, what will happen with the fence, the plumbing, and the electrical upgrades that are desperately needed at the shelter. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Mark, just a quick question. I know neither one, the chief or the major's not here. Not this chief, but the previous chief. I asked how things were down there because it was brought up to us and Jasmine was very vocal at the, uh, budget hearings about, not, it wasn't even this year, it was last year's budget hearing, about the dog, dog pound and, um, 'cause I've heard through the, same thing through the grapevine and whatever, that there's not enough food and all that, and then I hear from the chief, "There's plenty and you're not being told all the facts." So, not this chief, by the way, the former chief. Is it, is it really as bad as they say down there? And that's, that's the question I have. And if, if it is, has Lori let the chief know?
I, you'd have to check with the chief.
That's what I'm directing.
Can I speak to it? Because I, I met with Officer Ravad, um, on Saturday and toward, um, toward the facilities. It's, it's in disrepair. It's a complete mess. If it wasn't for Officer Ravad, most of the care that's being given to these animals, um, just wouldn't be happening. She's a hustler. She's literally, um, getting donations from all different people. Um, she's really amazing. We, you know, we have to thank her. I, I thanked her. You know, there are a number of things that have to take place. One, um, I know you mentioned the washer and dryer. I spoke to her regarding the washer and dryer. Her concern right now regarding the washer and dryer is she'd have to give up a crate, and she doesn't wanna give up the space for a crate yet. So that's something that we'd have to deal with at some point. There needs to be some type of expansion. Um, it, it's a limited area, but it needs to be expanded. Um, she'd love to have an A.C. at some point, because during the summer, she said it gets up to ninety degrees and the animals are hot, and in fact, she'll actually take the, um, the fans and she'll move them towards the animals, so she sits there in the heat with her assistant. Uh, it, it really, it needs some work. My, my hope, and I, and I know there's, you know, a spending halt at this point, but maybe a group like the Lions is able to do some fundraising, or maybe even get people who can come forward, who can build, or who can, uh, possibly, you know, build that type of expansion or, or create the things that she need. Maybe that, an air conditioner could be donated, um, and installed. I, I don't know. But the facility's old. The facility, um, it's, it's, it's in decay, and, and a new facility, obviously we can't afford it, but a new facility at some point needs to be put in place. We had talked about this, actually. Myself- Myself and the former manager, we actually had a plan to move forward and try to come up with a new facility in partnership with other cities that abut us. But given our situation right now, that's on the back burner.
How, how big of an air conditioner? Is it like a household one, like a regular household air conditioner?
I mean, the facilities are much bigger than this, than this room.
Yes, like a size of a garage.
I have, I have like a brand new one that's like.
No, I think you'd need more like, more than a five thousand. You would need central air.
Yeah, you need like a twenty thousand.
That's why, that's why I asked. Yeah, that's what I asked how big it was. I didn't know how big the room was or.
So, great question, Jay. The issue is that the, the electrical can't handle much more and the plumbing agree with.
I figured there was more to it, but.
Yeah, there's more to the story. And the washer and dryer, we can install a new washer and dryer because what I was told, right, so I don't know the hundred percent of the truth, facts, but what I was told is they can't have an installed washer and dryer because it's, it, it has a septic and it can't handle it.
It starts to hide the sewer over there.
So, there, it's much more than just being able, I mean, yes, if it needed a new AC, we, I could, so for the countertop, we had a company install, donate, install for free. We had a free plumber come in and the Lions Club bought the sink. We paid for the sink. So, what would have been a.
Which she's very happy about.
And we're happy about it too. It's a nice, she had like a regular tube.
Held up by sticks.
Held it by sticks and, and prayer. And so.
Got no duct tape?
Let's address, let's address, address the fence first.
Yep. Which is the biggest need.
That sounds like it's a very bad safety issue. And, you know, Mark, I know you said a, a, a spending freeze, but except for safety issues. So, what I would like you to do is have, uh, Chief McGara or Major Nott, I know Chief McGara's on vacation, to go down there and see what's going on with the fence. I know Lori did go out and get bids on the fence a few times. So, um, get that resolved. Also, we have an electrician here in town, which is Joe Argenti. Um, he's our electrical inspector. He's an instructor at C C R I and he worked for National Grid. So, I think we should get an expert down there and see what's truly going on with the electrical because, um, Lori's not an electrician and I don't know who gave the report. But I think definitely, uh, we need our electrical inspector down there to look at that. We don't want any major hazards or anything going on there. And we don't want to add additional things if it's gonna cause a, a bigger hazard.
Exactly.
So, if we can get them down there, get a report on it and go from there.
Will do.
Thank you.
We'll put it, uh, put it in the next agenda to give an update.
Well, he can update us through email.
No, I know, but we can update, we can, we can update, yeah, we can update.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Town managers report.
I only have one thing to report. Uh, we recently had a meeting with regard to the Sitiphi Avenue drainage project. DPW, uh, our, our, uh, we met with the, um, state C D B G program, um, in Elaine Mansour with regard to, uh, the status of the project and moving forward. We went over federal requirements, met with Fussin O'Neill. Fussin O'Neill is moving forward with a revised design of the project, uh, not using the easement through the Pond Street property, uh, but instead, um, going down West Street and tying into, uh, Le Chance. The timeline for the project is to have the engineering firm start to work on the bid specifications almost immediately, um, with an expectation that the specification will be complete in the early winter. We go out to bid early midwinter for a, uh, bid award in the spring for construction to begin this construction season. We also are required to obtain three easements on properties on Shippi Avenue. Uh, the DPW department has contacted, uh, two of the three property owners already and asked if they would be willing to donate easements. Uh, they, we seem to get a good reception. However, according to federal guidelines and HUD requirements, we still need to notify them formally in writing. Uh, we've worked on a notice, um, to the property owners, which has been forwarded from our C D B G office to the state C D B G office. And they're currently reviewing that letter. Once we get that letter back, we will initiate formal contact with those property owners and hopefully negotiate, uh, an easement free of charge. That's basically where.
Those, um, those easements also would have to be updated in their deeds, correct?
They would be. Uh, so, our engineering, uh, consultant would be writing the actual easements in, with, um, attachments or exhibits that would lay out the easement on the property. They're, they're fairly well designed at this point. They're just not specific as to being inserted into easement language. But, uh, yeah. So, the issue there is we'd need to install a drain line between adjoining properties, running down a property line, then across the back property and heading back through current drainage that we have existing in the area. We'd be tying into that with a larger, I think it's a twenty-four inch pipe. We've also agreed to design the project in phases. Phase one being a portion of a green project and live drainage, as I just mentioned, running down Shippi and tying into Le Chance. And phase two being extension of the green project, um, on Shippi Avenue with the hope that there may be some potential additional C D B G money in the future. So, what we, what we've directed the engineer to do is design the project for the full pro, for, for the full design, uh, but as an add alternate, meaning phase two, we would get numbers on phase two and we would have the option of moving forward with phase two if funding was available or not moving forward with phase two and just doing phase one of the project. And you may recall, the last time that I spoke about this, uh, we had met with some of the neighbors in the area and we actually took a step back. The concern was that the design that we were moving forward with was not gonna be adequate to resolve downstream flooding. So, we took another look at the project and that's why we altered the project into two phases, uh, to accommodate the piping downstream, which will be a closed system, twenty-four inch, uh, piping tying into a live drainage system. So, that should help to alleviate some of the downstream flooding problems that, you know, have been concerned of some of the neighbors.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Ward reports?
Five? Um, just one quick update. If you're following, uh, the Crompton Meadows development that abuts Nottingham and Coventry, um, at the last planning meeting. So, they were looking for a hundred and fifty-six condo units, which myself and a number of the, um, local residents have been fighting. It was now proposed by the developer that they'd rather move to eighty single-family homes, uh, versus the hundred and fifty-six units. So, we don't know exactly what's going on there, but I was in contact with their planner the other day. He said it was just proposed. We'll get more information as, um, things move forward. I think it was originally zoned for sixty, not eighty. So, I'm sure we'll be still attending those meetings and fighting that, um, and fighting for lodge buffers and things to that effect. Uh, but that's where that stands right now.
Thank you. Four?
Two things. Uh, the weekend of the October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, the Patuxent River Authority is conducting a cleanup at, at the fishing pier and surrounding areas, um, around the waterfront on Manchester Street. And also on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, this is more of a town-wide than a ward four. And I, I've cleared this with, uh, with manager Carulo. The town will be putting on a Halloween party at the civic center. Um, I've been working very hard on this behind the scenes to make this a free event, for everyone who attends. I'm finishing up a flyer and drafting a letter, which I will provide to the manager, uh, some point, hopefully tomorrow, but probably not. Within a couple of days, um, it will have a, it'll be complete with a costume contest, games, um, looking at ages from, from zero to, well, newborns to, like the baby, um, up to about ten years old. So, and, uh, just finishing up the details now, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Three. So, next weekend, I'm gonna be walking in the NAMI Walk, National Alliance on Mental Illness, uh, October fourteenth at Roger Williams Park. I know that isn't West Warwick, but it gave me the idea to, uh, potentially do a five K here in West Warwick next spring. So, I'm gonna be talking to some of you guys over the next few weeks and months to try to organize that. I was at the, uh, the Health Equity Zone, uh, steering committee yesterday, brought it up to them. And, um, in the coming months, we'll probably address it again, but just wanted to mention that. A five K possibly up. I know we've done a five K in the past and I don't know where the exact path was. Yeah, so. So, just something I'm working on. If anybody has any ideas. I know one of my constituents gave me this idea, messaged me. Um, so, that's what I got.
Thank you. Two, um, a couple of things. Mark, if I can get a, a email with an update of Lipit Milk and where they stand. I know they were applying for their permits and finalizing all the, uh, plans for that. The old Jerry Supermarket's under construction of some sort, if I can just get an update on that. Also, Christmas tree lightings are already being talked about in Phoenix. That'll be going on. Um, Jay, I know there's gonna be, it's, it's the same night as your Halloween party, but the Phoenix Baptist Church is doing a trunk or treat. So, you can actually coincide, go down the trunk or treat, go up to the civic center or vice versa. Um, so, they'll be, um, looking to shut down the Phoenix Square from six to eight. And what time's your party?
Uh, it's gonna be either at four or five.
Well, you're an early bird.
Yeah. Well, we're dealing with little, little ones.
You should, I'm sorry, you should also, I, I forgot to mention the other, the trunk or treat for the West Warwick Girl Softball too, which is the twen, the twenty-first.
The fourteenth. That will be at seven o'clock on the fourteenth at Root Point.
October fourteenth, yep.
October fourteenth.
So, um, also, Mark, um, the, the development up on North Pleasant Street. I have a constituent who abuts, uh, the property. You know exactly.
Someone called me today, yeah.
Um, he'd like us to meet with him and the building official and you on his property. Uh, everything that's been planted or whatever has died.
Okay.
And he wants to make sure that, uh, things are being done right before they continue moving forward with that project.
He, he did call me today. I did not get back to him, but I, I know exactly who you're talking about.
I spoke to him at five o'clock. He called me around eight thirty and I spoke to him around five o'clock on the way home. That's all I think I have. Oh, and, um, if anybody remembers the, uh, Santa Bench down in Phoenix, David Hoarder, it's after Frank Hoarder, memory of. Uh, David Hoarder actually, um, out of his own pocket, paid the tree carving guy, uh, two hundred dollars to put another real good coat of polyurethane on it. So, he, he's taking care of that. And, uh, go from there. Angelo, Ward one?
Uh, is Dave or Freddie here?
No.
I wanted a update on my bond money, how much I had left on the roads. Uh, I think you were just doing.
Dave's still trying to resolve that, yeah. There's a little discrepancy between DPW and the finance department. They're working on that.
Well, Ward one, the roads are looking great. We've got almost every road done between Kent County Water and the bond money. I just wanted to see what was left because now it's hard to find a road that needs to be paved because it's mostly all new. And I'm thankful for all that. And the other thing was.
Phoenix app?
I wanted to act, yeah, well, I got some, I wanna see how much money I got, but, you know, come across with a lot of it.
Yeah, I know.
Um, we had that one time with the feds. I don't know what happened to that.
I like to say, I sent an email to Elaine. I like to see some sidewalks and the road being done, but it's not, it's not qualifying right now, so.
Uh, what was the other thing? Oh, I wanted to see the no through trucks, so, uh, the chief's not here today. No one's here from the police department.
They put up plenty of signs because.
On Wakefield Street?
Yeah.
Where?
At the bottom in the.
You can't see it.
I don't know, somebody actually.
And then, uh, from, from Providence Street to Wakefield Street.
Right.
I didn't see any there. There's none there.
A lot of the trucks turn from Clyde though, right? Typically, more, uh.
That's a cut through. They're going with big dump trucks, big ten-wheelers, trailer trucks. They can't make that curve. Every day I put my, my hand in my mouth because when, when you're coming around that bend and I travel that road fifteen times a day and them cars, uh, them trucks are past that double line and they, someone's gonna actually get killed over there, God forbid. But Ward one's quiet, Ward one's under control. It's looking good. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Upcoming appointments, planning board one and alternate member for a five-year term. Technology committee, one ward two to expire twelve thirty-one eighteen, one ward three to expire twelve thirty-one eighteen, one ward five to expire twelve thirty-one eighteen. Sewer use board, tax board of review, one term to expire ten seventeen. West Warwick Housing Authority, one term to expire eleven seventeen. Board of Tenant Affairs Public, one term to expire eleven seventeen. Pension Board, two with a term to expire eleven eighteen seventeen and eleven eighteen nineteen, two for a term to expire eleven eighteen twenty-one. Public comment?
Um, just a quick thing, um, on the pension board. I know we just had a resignation, but I also hear there may be another resignation, so we need to start advertising that. Also, um, one quick, two other quick things. How do you, does the council want to go about, um, municipal judge and prosecuting judge, uh, attorney? We need, do we want to advertise that or do we want?
I would. I would put it out.
We should.
Advertise it and then we'll go through the apps.
Okay.
And one, one other thing that ain't on here is the alternate for the sewer appeals board. We forgot that.
Yeah, we gotta put that on there.
That's gonna be on there because that's.
Well, I mean, when is the municipal judge? When is the, when is he leaving?
Well, he's leaving December thirty-first. He doesn't really have court in December. He's always had that rule. Um, so.
But the prosecutor is go, is going now.
Prosecutor's gone.
So, what are we doing in the meantime?
In the meantime, it's always been the solicitor who, or, uh, Sergeant Malloy? Or is it? That's not gonna be a possibility unless, unless there's some maneuvering with the collective bargaining. I think that's gonna be, I need to look at through the, uh, collective bargaining, uh, agreement of Sergeant Malloy's position. Okay. So, that's, so we need to advertise, Mark, if you can have Karen advertise both, um.
What's that?
Court, advertise the, uh, district court, the municipal court judge. Uh, cost effective as possible.
Volunteer position.
And, uh, I'd like to, um, the judge has to be a West Warwick resident, correct?
Yeah.
Like a charter, yes. District court prosecutor does not.
I'm getting beeped from the, uh, one of my constituents on the road that has to be down.
Any public comment? Mr. Goodrow?
Gadro.
Gadro. You could, I, I know you have, go ahead. You can just speak loud.
Uh, again, the police cars on the curb. Like, tonight, got number eleven sticking out. So, but there weren't cars next to them, so I just go around that way.
Yep.
I mean, I'll buy the reflectors and put them there. You know, it, it, this, you know, I've been walking the dog there for four years and now in the last seven months, it seems.
Which curb are we talking? Are we talking around that side of the building?
On.
So, the sidewalk, this.
The police car, where the police cars only. They have that curb and what they do is they back in and they block the sidewalk.
Yep.
And it's fine if you're walking.
No, I, I, I actually, uh, took a walk before the meeting because I did see your email. Um, I took a walk before the meeting. I took a walk all the way up to the corner. I showed some pictures. I also showed, um, Mr. Carulo where the telephone pole is. There's two pickups that are sticking kind of out. And I know when you have to go around that telephone pole, because the telephone pole is right in the middle of the sidewalk.
That's a dangerous road too.
Um, also, the truck is parked in the entrance. It's kind of strange because it's lined, but it's also in an entranceway. It's lined in the entranceway. So, that's something we need to look at. And I did see him walking through here. All our police cars were backed in, which they're supposed to be backed in for safety reasons.
Right, I understand that.
But they just, I think what we need to do is have DPW come in, reset the curb, the bumper blocks further away. And I, I think that's all we need to do. And then when they back their tires right up against it, it'll stay away from that sidewalk. I agree with you one hundred percent. I started here tonight. And that's why I asked it, because it was definitely around that side. I didn't realize you were using that sidewalk also, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, when, Shippi Avenue, we've got ATVs running down the street. We've got go-cots. The sidewalks are all, if they, if people leave the container, I just can't walk, walker there. I haven't been able to let people drop. So, I've always come down here and, you know.
We'll, we'll address it. I apologize that it, it wasn't addressed from before. You shouldn't have to be here. We'll, we'll, we'll make sure that Mark works with the DPW and gets. Basically, they just gotta take the backhoe, slide them and re-pin them into the asphalt so that way they're, because when the officer backs up, he backs up his car right to the curb and then, and leaves, he probably doesn't even think they're blocking it. But we'll get, we'll get that resolved for you.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I went in, you know, I was frustrated. I went, um, one night, I'm like, you know, can you move the car? Do you need? And I've got Captain yelling at me. He's gonna throw me myself. You calling me an idiot? And I, I'm talking about the people that keep parking. It, it's frustrating.
Who was the captain?
I've gotten videos. He was on today. So, yeah, it's just.
All right, we'll address it. Thank you, Mr. Goodrow.
Okay, the other thing is that the DPW garage, when you have to bring, uh, cardboard or. or grass, yard waste or something, you've got to go in the office and get the permit to go to the back, you've got to fill out the paperwork. All parking spaces right in front of the door are all for employees, and the closest handicap is over at the school.
I'll, we'll address that one also.
It should be one, one parking spot, they have to handicap anyway.
I know where he's talking, the handicaps way left, then D.P.W. Director, Assistant Director, they're all right.
There's none over there, the handicap is.
The big garage, to, to the right. Um, me personally, I think if you're handicapped, you shouldn't have to get out of the car, you should be able to toot on that horn, let them come out and service you, that's my opinion.
I'm, I'm getting better, I'm still in physical therapy, and so I can walk in.
We should have a spot, but I, I think if you, if you, if you called, they, they probably would come out, no?
Well, that, that's the thing.
You don't get an answer when you call, you hit the machine.
You do.
And then, when they get a chance, they get back you.
So, I, I, I agree with you, just go ahead, hit the horn, and maybe somebody come out and help you. That's, that's my opinion, I want to, I'll have that conversation with Dave Lombardi. To me, if you're handicapped, and you, you have to get out of the car to go get a permit to get back into the car, to go to the back, and fight to get stuff out of your car, I personally think we have people on site, and if you're handicapped, and you, you should be able to get assistance from somebody on site and help you unload it. That's just my opinion.